Lineup sheet usually by the door if anybody wanted to sign up to speak on an item tonight. Bear with us as we wait for some tech and some staff. Staff, are you ready?
Yes.
I'd like to call to order the March 4th, 2024 Virgin County Planning Commission meeting. Staff, please confirm the following: In accordance with the Freedom of Information Act, a copy of the agenda was sent to the news media, persons requesting notification, and posted on the bulletin board located in the county administration building. Is that correct?
This is correct.
Thank you. Staff, can you please take attendance for today's meeting?
All right. Attendance for the March 4th, 2024 Virgin County Planning Commission. Yonke.
Here.
Fryerson. Johnson. Duffy.
Here.
Metz.
Here.
Durant.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Serks.
Here.
Grady.
Here.
Thank you, staff, and we wish Ms. Fryerson well with travels. She did reach out to me. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the March 4th, 2024 Virgin County Planning Commission meeting. As a planning commission, we are concerned residents of Virgin County who volunteer our time to thoroughly review and make recommendations to county council. Our recommendations are to approve or deny zoning map amendment requests. Per Title VI, Chapter 29 of the SE law, Code of Laws, planning commission may also prepare and revise plans and programs for the development or redevelopment of unincorporated portions of the county. The county's land development code rewrite process conducted last year is an example of this. Once again, we are recommending body to county council, and they will conduct their own public hearing and take official votes to approve or deny map amendments and tax amendments on a future date to be published by the county. Council typically holds zoning public hearings on the fourth Tuesday of the month. Is that still true?
It's typically the meeting date.
Great. Please check the county's website for updated agendas, dates, and times. Please take note of the following guidelines for today's meeting. Please turn off or silence any cell phones. Audience members may quietly come and go as needed. Applicants are allowed up to two minutes to make statements. Citizens signed up to speak are allowed up to two minutes each. Redundant comments should be minimized. Please only address remarks to the commission and do not expect the commission to respond to questions from the speaker in a back-and-forth style. That is not the purpose of this meeting. Please no audience-speaker exchanges. No audience demonstrations or other disruptions to the meeting are permitted, nor are comments from anyone other than the speaker at the podium. Please remember, the meeting is being recorded, so please speak into the microphone, give your name and address. Abusive language is inappropriate and will not be tolerated. Please don't voice displeasure or frustration at a recommendation while the planning commission is still conducting business. If you have any questions or concerns, you may contact Virgin County Planning Staff. We will now move on to number three on our agenda today, which is additions or deletions to the agenda. Are there any motions, commissioners, for additions or deletions to the agenda? Let's also deal with any motions to amend the agenda. Hearing none, we can move on to item number four on our agenda today, which is the approval of minutes from prior meetings. The staff provided the commission with copies of the transcript of the commission's February 5th, 2024 meeting. Do any commission members have any comments or concerns regarding these transcripts? Hearing none, the chair makes a motion to approve the minutes. Unless there's an objection, do I have a second? Second, thank you. Commissioner Durant. Staff, please take a vote.
All right, those in favor of the approval of the February 5th, 2024 minutes, planning commission? Yonke.
Aye.
Johnson. Duffy.
Aye.
Metz.
Aye.
Durant.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Serks.
Aye.
Grady.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, staff. Now moves us to item number five on our agenda, the consent agenda. The consent agenda is an item, action item, that allows the commission to approve road names and map amendment requests where the staff recommends approval and either no one from the public has signed up to speak against the amendment, or no member of the commission is in need of further discussion on the request. To start with, Commissioner Grady, do we have any cases on our agenda today where no one has signed up to speak?
No.
Okay. Fellow commissioners, would anyone like to engage in discussion on any of the map amendments that are still on the consent agenda? But I see that we have people signed up to speak, so that is moot. The chair makes a motion then for the consent agenda to approve road names, item 5A, and leaving off item B, which was deferred, road renaming, and excluding the map amendments. One, which is deferred. Two, which we have people sign up to speak. And three, which has a recommendation of disapproval. So our consent agenda today, motion made by the chair, would just be items 5A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second from Commissioner Grady? Just approving road names, in other words. Staff, can you please take a vote?
All right, those in favor of the approval of the road names? Yonke.
Aye.
Johnson. Duffy.
Aye.
Metz.
Aye.
Durant.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Serks.
Aye.
Grady.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Hey, thank you, staff. This moves us on to our map amendments for today, which would be item 5C. With number one being deferred, we'll move on to number two. Staff, please explain.
Just also want to make a note, this is our actual first meeting that's fully under a new land development code. First item is case 24-001 MA. The applicant is Carl Kaiser. The location is on Wilson Boulevard. The applicant is requesting to rezone 66.43 acres from Agricultural District AG to Light Industrial LI. Staff recommends approval of this request as the request complies with the intentions of the comprehensive plan. This site is located within the economic development corridor, and thus the requested zoning is supported by the comprehensive plan. In addition, the requested zoning districts supports this desired development pattern as it is located along a major road and just north of an interstate interchange. Again, for these reasons, staff recommends approval.
Thank you, staff. Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff? Yes, Commissioner Durant. Commissioner Durant, please speak in your microphone. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Price, I see the property in question bumps up against properties that comes under the city of Columbia, correct?
That is correct.
Do we know what the nature of those properties in the city of Columbia are?
I believe that's the mental health, I think formerly the Craft Farrow site, which is, which will more than likely be designated as institutional.
Thank you, staff. Any other questions for the staff? Good. Commissioner Grady, do we have anyone signed up to speak? Do we have an applicant?
Yes, the applicant Carl Kaiser is signed up to speak.
Azra, please come down, give us your name and your address, and you have two minutes.
My name's Mark Wilson. Is that better? Perfect.
Thanks.
Perfect. I'm not, I'm not Carl Kaiser, but I'm Mark Wilson. I'm with Scannell Properties, who is the developer representing Carl Kaiser this evening. We're also the developer who is proposing the rezone of the property. As I mentioned, I'm with Scannell Properties. We're an industrial development group who does Class A industrial development all across the country. We've been doing industrial development for over 30 years and actually have done products in the greater Columbia area. In the past couple of years, we developed a 247,000 square foot Class A industrial building just north of the airport, off of Colite Drive and Platte Springs Road, if anyone's familiar with the area. But tonight, we're here to address the, our application to rezone the property from rural to light industrial. And the purpose of that is for new Class A industrial development, very similar to what we've already developed in the greater Columbia area. Just want to keep it short and sweet, but want to note that we did attend a town hall meeting led by Councilwoman Gretchen Barron on November 30th. We were very thankful to be there, and we're thankful for the opportunity to speak to the general public and answer any questions. Thankful for everyone in attendance. You know, we thought the outcome of that meeting was favorable, and we're glad to be here tonight, so, you know, wanted to keep it short and sweet tonight, but I'm here to answer any questions and appreciate your time and consideration.
Thanks for coming out.
All right. You'll have to forgive me, I can't make out the last name, but Charles, does he have to speak? Thank you.
Commissioner, please, your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Charles Gary, 12 Maraville Court, Columbia, South Carolina, 29203. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. My name is Charles Gary, a longtime resident of North Columbia. In Richland County Strategic Planning Workshop summary report, page 28, it was stated, and I quote, "Engaging two-way communication with citizens to find smart growth in each county district. Conversation should include explanation of the roles of staff, officials, those metrics to be used, implementation, proper adherence to land development codes." November 30th Town Hall meeting, today is the first time that I heard of that particular meeting, and I understand some of my colleagues, the first time they heard of that meeting where that conversation should have taken place. And if you refer to your page 28 in your strategic planning workshop summary report, my concern is what type of industry would be allowed under the requested zoning change? It's been my understanding that for many years, that Fairfield Road, 321 Monticello Road quarters was based to design as industrial manufacturing quarter with the Wilson Boulevard as a residential quarter. Why is there a change in this particular strategy that was used some years ago? And as you can see on your planning map, this is a, this property sits dead in the center of the city of Columbia. What are the plans to city of Columbia, although the state owns that property? Have any conversations been engaged with the city, with the city and the state to see what they plan to do with all this massive land that encompasses this property? Has the wetlands on the property been identified? Because I'm pretty, I know there's some wetlands on the property, because some years ago, we looked at this property for Richland District 1. Is there any sewage available to the property? Have they brought in necessary sewer lines? The storm drainage? What traffic young pack would have? You have school buses?
That's your time, sir. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Next signed up to speak, Barbara Roach.
Good evening.
Great evening.
I'm Barbara Roach, and I live at 204 Penrose Drive in the Meadow Lake subdivision. I have lived there since 1976. I have a daughter who has a grandson, so I've been there a long time, and I've been a teacher and so forth in the district. And we've always had a pleasant atmosphere on Wilson Boulevard. Family type. We've had the recreation commission there, we've had things for our children to use, and we have the new Kenan High School. Well, it's a little older now, but we have those schools on that corridor. We are not a corridor where you go up and down with 18-wheelers and these large cars and so forth. It's really a family-oriented corridor. The buses that carry the students on that section have a place there where we have buses that come and come and take students on that side of the town. And just like Charles said, Meadow Lake, I mean, 21 was designed to be a residential-type corridor. Fairfield and Monticello were designed to be a little different. We don't want more trucks and more things coming into the company, taking away from the atmosphere of one neighborhoods, the school, the high school. You know, it's just a lot that our children have really benefited from, from being in a community like that. And we don't want our grandchildren who are coming up behind us to have to be into a busy-type atmosphere. No problems with something that would be something that's family-oriented, but if you're going to have industrial so forth, you're going to have to have the larger cars, you're going to have a lot of in and out of materials, and that would not add to the atmosphere for our children and for me as a retired teacher. Thank you.
Next up, Frederick Hill.
Good evening. My name is Frederick Hill, and I'm a resident of Wilson Boulevard, Hastings Point neighborhood. Basically, I won't take up too much of your time. I'm just trying to be here to see what the plans are, what they consist of, and what, when, and why. I'm just like this young lady here. I've just moved into the neighborhood, and I've moved in the neighborhood because of the atmosphere around us. Family-oriented neighborhood, not a lot of traffic, not a lot of trucks, bus systems come through for the children. It's pretty safe. We don't have a lot of big trucks coming through there, creating a lot of unwanted havoc that we see from time to time when they do come through there. I'm not here to cause any kind of ruckus about that, but I just want to make sure everybody know that when we bought this house and this property, we bought it because of the atmosphere of the neighborhood. It's, it's quiet, very safe, everybody gets along from where we are, everything flows pretty evenly up and down that road. We kind of know what's going on all the time, so I think when you bring in trucks and a big company like that, you're asking for a lot of problems with that. You got to do the streets, redo the streets, put stoplights in and all this and that, so forth, and all these things, so I understand all that. I'm just here to voice that my opinion that this needs to be looked at further than just someone buying some property and just throwing up what they want out here on this property because it's affecting everything around it. Houses, the property value, all of that, it's going to affect all of that. So I'd like for you all to take that in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, and the last person on the list here, Timothy Webb.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Hey, I can count a caveat on what everybody else has already said.
Be exact with your name and address.
Okay, Timothy Lee Webb, at 352 Garvey Circle in Hastings Point. I can count a caveat on what everybody else said. It is a feminine neighborhood. I think bringing the industry down that road would be a little bit too much for us on that side of town, so I'd like to, you know, kind of keep it the way it is if we can. But like I said, you know, I think everybody else covered what we need to talk about, and I just hope y'all consider that. Thank you very much.
And thank you for coming out tonight.
Those are all the people that we have signed up on.
This item is now open on the floor for discussion, commissioners, as well as any additional questions for staff. Staff, I was wondering if you could turn on the zoning layer on the map? Does this show our new zoning?
It does not, not on this map.
Oh, no worries. In the moment, I want to just see from the old. Looking at the old map may still show what I want to see. I want to see the character of the neighborhood here. Well, I'm hearing from the community and the audience that there's a lot of residential up and down 21.
Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Johnson.
While staff is pulling up the map information, I think it might be helpful from a management of expectations that while proponents typically explain what they intend to do as a part of their request for approval, I've heard at least two of the speakers raise a question about knowing more about and to, based upon the use, how to move.
Staff, could we ask the applicant to come down and speak for another couple of minutes based off of some of the comments?
Yes, sir, I think you could ask any, ask the applicant to come in and ask any questions.
Would you like to come back down and address some of the comments? Thanks.
And Mark Wilson with Scannell Properties. I don't believe I stated our address before, but it's 294 Grovelane East in Wayzata, Minnesota. Thank you for all the comments and everyone who came out tonight. We appreciate it, and, you know, we, we hear a lot of the same comments that were addressed at the November 30th Town Hall meeting, which are appreciated. And, you know, the, the development that we are proposing is speculative development at this point, and so, again, it would be Class A industrial development. So what we typically see in these types of speculative developments are buildings anywhere in the range from likely 150,000 to 250,000 square feet. The buildings typically have an office component to them, so they're very good-looking buildings. Offices can range anywhere from, you know, 500 feet to 10,000 square feet. The tricky part about being at this stage of the process is in the speculative development, we don't necessarily know who the end user in the building will be, so as much as I want to, you know, stand in front of you here today and tell you exactly what you can expect to go at the, in this development, we really just can't due to the speculative nature of the project at this time. And so I will say the types of users that go into these buildings are typically either light manufacturing or distribution uses. And so I'm not denying that there may be increased truck traffic, which I know is a major concern of, of the public and the folks here tonight, which we completely understand. But I also want to remind everyone that we go through all the necessary due diligence on the site prior to actually developing the site, so we consider many different things in terms, you know, to name a few, wetland surveys, you know, topography surveys, traffic studies, and also work with professional engineers, city staff, SC DOT, to make sure that this development is compliant with all local and state laws, and is also a good fit for the community, because if it doesn't fit the community in the area, it won't be mutually beneficial for anyone. But we've strategically identified the site because we believe it, it has a lot of potential for this type of development. We want to point out that the future land use map of Richland County does guide it for this type of use of, of light industrial product, and we believe, we believe that, you know, there's a lot of opportunity for this site. So, again, I apologize, I can't really speculate any more than that on the types of users that will be in this development, but I hope that gives you a general understanding of what, what you could expect.
Thank you, sir. And with the planning commission, we're charged with looking at just the zoning. Mr. Price, would you explain that again?
Yes, each zoning designation carries a multitude of uses, some outright permitted, some by special exception, some by special requirement. So, when a property is rezoned, it is open to any of those uses that the applicant desires to place on that property. So one of the things that we don't typically do is ask the applicant to be specific as to what it is you're going to place on the property. You know, sometimes maybe for residential, you can kind of narrow that down, but normally once you get to commercial or institutional even industrial, there's such a number of uses that, you know, them stating exactly what is it will do doesn't necessarily mean that is what's going to happen on the property. So normally what we ask is that planning commission and making your determination, you just base it on the appropriateness of that zoning designation and that location as it relates to both the comprehensive plan, the character of the area, any other appropriate ways you would like to look at your request.
Thank you, sir. Here. Yes, Commissioner Johnson. Taylor, Commissioner Taylor. Thank you.
A quick question for staff. It may be a better question for county council, I'm not sure. So with the town hall meetings, do you know if the So, with the town hall meetings, do you know if the... If they keep notes or if there's any kind of minutes or anything from a town hall meeting that are made available to constituents or residents?
I don't believe that they are.
Okay. Do you know where they make the announcement? Because the, I thought it was said that they didn't know that there was a town hall meeting.
Typically, they will place signage along the main road corridors advertising for the meeting. It is also on the county website. And I can't speak specifically for every council member, but I know a number of them, when it is in their district, will do notification through their, you know, through their own means to their constituents.
Final question. Do you know if, and you may not know, during these town hall meetings, will applicants discuss, even in vague terms, as was laid out just now, whether or not, what kind of uses will go on in the designated area?
We've found that a lot of times during the town hall meetings that the applicants are a little more open as to what it is they're proposing to place on the property. But again, what is said and what it actually goes, there could be two different things. But those meetings are typically open for the applicant to discuss what it is that they're going to place on the property and to take comments from the community.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, any further discussion? What we have before us under the new code, this is not rule anymore, it's AEG zoning type?
That's correct.
Opposed as light industrial, opposed to a heavier industrial? Commissioners, this is on the floor for discussion or any motions? Commissioners, maybe you can speak on the microphone?
Just for the record, I mean, the question...
Commissioner Johnson.
Just recognizing the distinction between the zoning as reflected in the package versus what's on the screen. But I know that you all said earlier that what does not reflect home code.
Correct. Staff is saying that the interactive map, Richland Maps, is not updated yet. So, a map from our packet is the one we have to refer to for the current 2021 zoning.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Durant.
Question for staff.
Yes.
I'm just trying to get an understanding of the surrounding plots in here, what the trend is here. If I go on Mr. Price's earlier answer to my question, the City of Columbia properties are operated by the South Carolina Department of Mental Health, and I think they're more akin to institutional. Is that correct?
Yes, the zoning that they have is more likely institutional.
And on the east and north side, it's already zoned for Richland County as general commercial. Given that, what's surrounding it, this seems a bit out of place. However, I do accept your conclusion that it's within the Richland County Comprehensive Plan. But I just want to make the comment, it seems out of place, Mr. Chair.
Durant, thanks. Does anyone want to take their thoughts and say it as a motion? Then we can get a vote?
Here.
Commissioner Grady.
I would like to put a motion on the table to approve this map amendment, 24-001 MA, for the reasons specified in the...
Thank you, Commissioner Grady. Do we have a second?
Sure.
Yes. Second. Commissioner Cirx. Seconds. Okay, we have a motion on the floor for approval with a second. Staff, go ahead and take a vote, please.
All right. Motion for approval for case 24-001 MA. Those, your yes vote is in favor of the motion for approval. Those in favor, Grady?
Aye.
Cirx?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Durant?
Aye.
Metz?
Aye.
Duffy?
Aye.
Johnson? Yonkey?
Aye.
Motion passes.
With that, we take item 5C2 as a recommendation of approval to county council, and they will meet on the fourth Tuesday of the month. Stay tuned to the website.
Yes, sir. I think that specific date is March 26th.
March 26th.
24/4 at 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM, thank you. And we can move forward to our next map amendment, which is item 5C3, case number 24-002 MA. Mr. Price?
Our next item is case 24-002 MA. The applicant is Kelvin Wright. The location is at 2 Flora Circle. The applicant is requesting rezoned 1.39 acres from R3, which is residential 3, to MU1, which is mixed... Neighborhood mixed use. I'm used to the new codes myself. Neighborhood mixed use 1. Staff recommends disapproval of this request. You know, kind of in short, the request does not meet the Comprehensive Plan's recommendation of locating non-residential development along main road corridors as Flora Drive is classified as a two-lane undivided local road. In addition, it does not meet the objective of being within a contextually appropriate distance from the intersection of our primary arterial. An approval of the rezoning request would be out of character with the surrounding development pattern and zoning districts for the area. In addition, the request would initiate the spread of non-residential zoning into an area where residential zoning may be more appropriate. For these reasons, staff recommends disapproval.
Thank you, staff. Any questions for staff, Commissioners? Hearing none. Commissioner Grady, do we have an applicant?
App...
Applicant? And people signed up to speak?
We do. The applicant Kelvin Wright.
Please come on down. Members, state your name and address.
How you doing? My name is Kelvin Wright. I'm a local attorney and also executive council member of Project Aspiration Foundation. We own and manage this property. And with the code change, we use it for organizational meetings. And the R3 doesn't specifically allow organizational meetings. So, that's why we're requesting it to be turned into a neighborhood mixed use. The property was actually a clubhouse for Clear Springs subdivision prior to us buying it, and we use it for various meetings and community events. We do community cleanups. We've done Black History Bowl. We've done a food truck event, community cleanups, a vaccination event. And multiple organizations use this property for their meetings. So, the goal is compliance. We don't want to be out of compliance with the new, the new zoning code that came down. So, that's the whole goal. So, it's not any intentions of changing the use of what we do with the property. We use it for organizational meetings. We just don't want to have citations coming up just because they changed the code.
Thank you, sir.
Several members of the public signed up to speak. First one on the list is Tina Louise Polite.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
May be recognized. Just for the record, for the applicant, the proposed use would not have been permitted under the previous zoning designation for the property also.
Thank you for clarifying that, staff.
Good evening. My name is Tina Louise Polite, and I'm at 18 Flora Circle, directly across from 2 Flora Circle. I've been a resident over 25 years and a homeowner since they've been in the community. To say it's been an improvement, we have a lot of children in the community, and I've worked with them on the clean sweep. Before, I was like a lone person, trust me. I've also started like Winslow Community Association way back when there was no association. So, I know the benefit of the children. We don't have any park nearby to have activities. The nearest one would be North Springs Park. We don't have transportation. And they are working on things such as have, they have a very big park, parking lot. So, yoga days, demonstrations for karate, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts. And they do seek community input. And I think it is very good for our students and community because before, it was supposed to be a clubhouse where you can have those activities. And I think it would be beneficial. And they work closely with myself and other community members to do things that enhance the community as well as for the youth. And it's something that's desperately needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have David Stone.
Either podium would work.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is David Stone. I'm at 125 Chunter Clear Road in the Clear Springs community. It's a nice, quiet, unique community, residential area. We do have kids out there. It's a nice place to, people in the area can walk, they can run without being bothered. Now, the building that they're talking about, since it's been occupied in the area, every weekend, I've noticed what seem to be party activities. And I'm not against partying, but the noise, despondence has went up in the neighborhood since that started. And a lot of times when you have things like that come into your neighborhood, sooner or later, it brings extended things that this quiet little neighborhood do not need. There's a pond in the area that the community use. I've been there for 30 years myself, and I've never seen as much noise there now than I have in the past 30 years. I haven't. The purpose of that community is residential, and I for one feel strongly that it should remain as a residential area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ethel Mahoney?
Good evening. My name is Ethel Mahoney. I've been a resident of the Clear Springs subdivision for over 37 years. It's a unique, small community. It's quiet, it's peaceful. Since they've taken that community center and acquired it, it's became very noisy. I live directly behind that community center. One house, and I could see the community center. And I feel that as a residential neighborhood, I think it should stay a residential neighborhood. Because what's going to happen, as my neighbor said, is bringing in unwanted traffic. It has not had any problems in that neighborhood since I've been there. You may have had minor, just like any other neighborhood. I don't think that as they stated, that they've came in and done a lot of benefit for the neighborhood. I think it take away from the neighborhood. Okay? And that's the way I feel about it, and I would like for it to remain a residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Could you state your address for the record?
It's Ethel Mahoney at 308 Rockingham Road.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next, it says David and Susan White. So, I don't know if you want to come down separately or...
I'm David White. I live at 1105 Flora Drive. And to reiterate what Mr. Stone said, it's a good family neighborhood. Also, the location in question is the site of frequent loud, raucous parties. We're on a pond. That pond magnifies the noise of the party all over the neighborhood. The last raucous party, someone leaving that parking lot, ran over, destroyed the mailbox of that address, which has not been repaired and gives the appearance of a derelict place. We, longtime residents there, just don't care for a lot of noise. And I'm a party man myself. But, and any other activities which the first two speakers spoke of, I have a horror of children drowning in that pond, which has a deck right over the water. My wife and I are not in favor of it becoming a community center. There's the Jewish Community Center on Flora Drive, right down the road, where rental events can be had. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Other names, Commissioner?
Sorry. Just by, if you'd like to speak. Okay. Last name I have on the list is, I believe, Dwayne Ismail.
Greetings to everyone on the panel there. Dwayne Ismail, 1101 Flora Drive, the one directly across down from the property itself. Pretty much in favor against, like everyone else here, quiet neighborhood. But I just want to clean up some things for the record. There was a community cleanup. I remember going past my house. I don't know what happened on the other end, but I did see it one time past my house. We do have a problem with trespassing at their particular location because there's not anyone there all the time. So, as I come home, I have to run people off. The gentleman's right, they use it for their community events. The Q's, I believe it is. So, what I do to find out if people are really there for them, I'll say, oh, so you hear Mr. Q let you fish? Oh, yeah, Mr. Q let me fish. Ms. Q said I can come anytime. I'm like, that's a lie. You can leave the property, what we call in the sheriff's department. So, I run people off from the property. We have a problem with trespassing. Every year, we have a problem with trespassing. Now, the pond is a private pond. Everyone who lives on the pond has rights to it. The people across the street do not have rights to their pond. My water rights go out and turn. Next to us is empty lots. Their rights go out. We have to run people off from there constantly. The property in question had a privacy fence up, and people could not see the water. Now, through beautification, it looks really nice that they really cleaned up the property. I'm going to give them that, it's really nice. But that fence came down, and people coming across that hill, they see all that water. Every weekend, fishermen want to be out there. I'm having to call the sheriff's department constantly. I'm in a battle with the lady next to me to put up no trespassing signs because we have... because we have litter. Time is ran. The JCC is available for any events. The pond is private, it's not there for the community. I pay property taxes to you guys for that, that right. And we do have a problem with trespassing. And that house was not a community house. I was there for 20 years. I had a neighbor who lived in that house.
Thank you, sir. That is your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is everyone who has signed up to speak on this matter.
Thank you, Commissioner. To be fair to the applicant, because I let the applicant from the other case come back and speak, does this applicant want to come up and speak?
Yes, I would.
Okay. I'll give you two minutes.
Thank you very much. Just want to address the mailbox. It's been fixed. We got it fixed shortly after it happened. There's no proof that it happened from the event. We just know that it was damaged and we had to put it back up. The way that the property is set up, it's a driveway for multiple, a lot of parking, things of nature. I don't disagree that maybe somebody lived in the house, but it's definitely set up for what we're using it for, which is like a clubhouse. I think we do a benefit for the community, and I think we should, it should be the exception and allow this property to continue to be used the way it is. I can't imagine being used for residential the way it's set up now. And if it's not zoned properly, it's just gonna end up creating issues where we're gonna be getting fined or whoever, because we own the property and we can't use it. And so I think it'd be taken away from our use as organization. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Commissioners, this is now up for discussion.
Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Grady?
Question for staff on this one. Obviously, there's been different opinions expressed here. But in staff's opinion, what is the difference between this property and, for example, a clubhouse or such in a subdivision that is allowed to be in a residential area?
Typically, when you see a parcel or a structure that's within a community and is part of the community, it's typically under the HOA, and it's designed specifically for the residents of that community or that area. I believe it was stated this will be privately owned and open outside of the community. So that's one of the main reasons why we looked at it, is not being an amenity for the, I'm sorry, the name of the community. Clear Springs. That it was not an amenity for the Clear Springs community, but rather it's a parcel that would be used more commercially, which is why the need for the rezoning is before you.
So that's the distinction in code is that...
No, we're looking, there are a couple of things we're looking at now. You know, typically, when, I think when this first came before us, I'm not sure, that might have been a year, two years ago, when this issue came before us. We, there are, there is a, there is a use, and we're, again, we're still reviewing what it actually means, but it's called Community Recreation Center. It's a place building or, and I'm just reading you the definition. It was found in Section 26-9.3 of the New Land Development Code. But it's a place building area or other facility used for providing social and recreation programs at facilities. The center may be private or public, and may be designed to accommodate and serve specific residential developments or significant segments of the community. So that is the definition now. So if you want to get against the specifics, the question, you know, if, again, going with the conversation that we just had for the last case, what you have before you is a request for MU1, and all of the uses to go with it. If we wanted to dive directly into, okay, a specific use and what's being before you, and if you're just looking at it that way, and we were to apply this definition I just read to you, you know, the question would become, does this, you know, accommodate and serve a specific residential development or significant segments of the community? So I think just based on that language, I would still stick with what I previously said to you, that these type of, these type of structures, even if it was a community recreation center, is typically designed for within the community and not necessarily a more commercial use that's open to anyone.
And that's understandable. I guess what I, my questions stem from this, this request for a zoning change sort of feels like using a hatchet room with a fly. It feels like an instrument that is not necessarily suited to the task, and I was just trying to interrogate.
I'll go back to you. So if we go back to the beginning when everything kind of came about, that I guess you could say kind of initiated this request for the rezoning, we may have been looking at this differently had the community come in. Clear Springs? Had they come in maybe as a community through HOA, I'm not sure if they have that or not, and this was something they wanted to establish for their community, then I don't think that a rezoning request would have been necessary because it would have been basically an amenity for the community. Just like any other subdivision, you see, you find swimming pools or buildings or something that's used specifically for, at least primarily for the community. What we've had to do, what's, well, I don't necessarily want to get into the enforcement part of it, but anyway, that's what, that's why we felt that it wasn't part of the community, and that's why the rezoning request is necessary.
Any other questions? Commissioner Taylor?
A question for staff. I thought I heard, and I may have heard wrong, but it's an, this is R3 now, correct?
Correct.
And what was the previous zoning designation?
This RSMD? RSMD.
And when moving from like an RSMD to an R3, did it pick up some like permitted uses? Do you know? Or was it a one-to-one or?
I'm sorry, I don't have that table before, you know, and I promise you, and going forward, we will have those comparisons in the future. I don't believe that, when it came to the residential zoning designations, the equivalencies didn't vary very much.
Wasn't sure. Did see that they were permitted by, like, subject to special requirements. I wasn't sure. That was a designation.
Again, now I'll tell you, we've had conversations, so I'm always a little uncomfortable talking in specific for a rezoning request because that's not what you have before you, but we're here, so I want to make sure, give you all the information that you have. So a community recreation center is allowed throughout, basically throughout all of our zoning designations by special requirement primarily. So I'll kind of read through the, the special requirements. There are three, but for this property, only two would apply. It says, "All buildings, swimming pools, lighted tennis courts, and athletic fields shall be located in a minimum of 50 feet from residential districts and lots containing residential uses. Swimming pools shall comply with the following, shall comply with the setback requirements for accessory buildings in the zoning district in which the pool is located, shall be enclosed by a fence having a district height of four feet that is equipped with a self-enclosing gate, having hardware for permanent locking, and if located in a residential district, shall not be operated as or in conjunction with a business daycare operation, bed and breakfast, or home occupation." And that's, that was more specific to the swimming pool. But those are the special requirements for a community recreation center.
The only reason I even brought it up was because trying to assess whether a change was even necessary, if it fell under one of these requirements. And again, hearing from the residents, it sounds like even with a residential designation, they still have to call law enforcement in to, you know, get rid of folks through no fault of the agency necessarily, but again, just trying to get a clear picture on everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Commissioners, further discussion or maybe a motion on the floor? For the floor.
Yeah, I'd be to propose a motion.
Commissioner Duffy?
Yeah, based on the recommendation, is Duff move for disapproval of the proposal before us?
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for disapproval. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Commissioner Metz? Okay, with the motion and a second, we'll take this up to a vote for disapproval. Staff, please take a vote.
All right, we have a motion for disapproval of Case 24-002 MA. A yes vote is in favor of the disapproval. Those in favor? Durant?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Sirkz?
Aye.
Grady?
Aye.
Metz?
Aye.
Duffy?
Aye.
Johnson? Yonki?
Aye.
So the motion for disapproval passes?
Staff? That will also go to County Council with the, our commission, disapproval from Planning Commission. Do you have a date for that meeting?
It'll also be March 26, 2024. That's a Tuesday at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, sir. Looking at our agenda, this would now move us into item number six. Other items, we have an action. A Olympia Mill District Historic Overlay. Turn this back over to staff for more information.
Okay. All right, so what we have before us, I think this has previously been stated to the Planning Commission. We started discussing this back in December, and then we also discussed this at our last meeting, is the introduction of a new zoning overlay district within our New Land Development Code. And this is the Neighborhood Character Overlay District. So what you have with, within the, within your agenda packet as taken directly from the Land Development Code is the section, of course, Section A, NC-0 Neighborhood Character Overlay District. And one of the things we did as a staff, and we understand that this is going to be a process. This isn't something necessarily that's gonna happen, you know, immediately. Maybe not today, maybe not even at your next meeting, but we wanted to make sure that we, that we are very diligent in how we approach this because this is one of the first overlays that we're applying that's gonna be part of a Neighborhood Character basis, and we want to make sure we're doing this correctly. So one of the things that from reviewing this as a staff is this was, we kind of looked at this almost as an application in which you have their address, answer some questions first, and in doing so, that would then allow you to then proceed on. So looking at A2, A2A, A2B, and 3, there were a number of, I wouldn't call them questions, but a number of statements that felt staff needed, felt needed to be addressed to show that the proposed overlay was eligible to be considered for an overlay designation. If you have any questions, please let me know. So as a staff, what we wanted to do was kind of go over each one of these items. And one of the things that also, that this section also requested was, was this proposed overlay? Did it meet certain requirements, and did those, and where were those requirements being met? And so you'll notice within your, within your package, you see a number of comments in red. And also, we included exhibits for this, so we can show you exactly where those were, where those come from. And basically, we use the current Olympia Mill Village Architectural Design Guidelines, which is something that we presented to you previously, and also the Crane Creek Mill District Master Plan, which is, which was adopted by County Council, I believe it's in your package. Mark? In 2017. So what I would like to do is just go over each, each of these items. I know it may seem a little tedious for you, but, you know, we'll be more than happy to go over because again, we want to make sure that this is done correctly and that we're being very transparent in how we go forward. Do y'all have any questions at this time?
Questions, Commissioners? Thank you, Mr. Price, for being thorough.
So one of the, one of the first, I guess, items that needs to be addressed was item A2A. And it was prior to the establishment of an NCO district for a specific neighborhood. A master plan for the neighborhood shall be completed and recommended for adoption by the Planning Commission. For this case, that is a check that has been done. The Capital City Mill District and Corridor Plan was adopted November 14, 2017, and there's also a link there for you if you wanted to have a chance to review it. The next item was a, a NCO district shall be established in accordance with Section 26-2.5A text amendment and Section 26-2.5B zoning map for each NC-0 district established. A unique combination of numbers and a letter shall replace the hashtag character to the name of the district. And so it is proposed that this will be identified as the Neighborhood Character Olympia Mill Village Overlay, NCO MV-0. 3A1, the area contains an NCO, NC-0 district shall meet all of the following requirements. And this is, we want to make sure that each one of these have been met so that we can go forward. The boundaries of the proposed overlay are depicted on page eight of the Olympia Mill Village Architectural Design Guidelines. The proposed overlay does meet these requirements. There are multiple blocks with many identified boundaries, and each block with many boundary fronts, at least two opposing streets. Tommy, can you put that jump drive in and go to Exhibit A? So while Mr. Delage is pulling that up, that is found on page 23 of your package, is labeled Exhibit A in which it outlines what the boundaries for the Olympia Mill District, excuse me, Olympia Mill Village Historic District. Okay? Thank you. Two, at least 60% of the land area within a proposed NC-0 district, not including street and other right-of-way, was developed at least 20 years prior to the development, to the neighborhood master plan being initiated. This is found on Exhibit B. According to the Olympia Mill Village Architectural Design Guidelines, which is found on page seven of that document, the construction of the homes within the, within the proposed overlay ranged from being constructed in 1900 to 1949. Three, there is ongoing, there is ongoing or anticipated new development or redevelopment within the area. County records using our building permits document that there is ongoing new development and or redevelopment within the boundaries of the proposed overlay. Four, one or more of the following attributes creates a distinctive cohesive character for the area, including scale, size, type of construction, or distinctive building materials. That is found on Exhibit C, again, page 10 of the Olympia Mill Village Architectural Guidelines. It outlines the history. It outlines the historical construction of the Olympia Mill Village. And also on pages twenty-eight through thirty-six, it depicts the building design of the houses within the proposed overlay. B, lot layout setbacks, street layouts, alleys and sidewalks. Exhibit D, these attributes of the Olympia Mill Village are outlined on pages ten, eighteen through nineteen, eighteen to nineteen, and twenty-three through twenty-seven, again, of the Olympia Mill Village. C, special natural or streetscape characteristics and land use patterns. Those are not applicable, again, for this particular section, had one or more of the following has to be found. And so we were able to at least identify two through items A and B. And also E, I'm sorry, and also E, which proximity to historic districts or sites. And exhibit E shows that the origins and history of the cotton Olympia Cotton Mill. They're provided on page nine of the Olympia Mill Guidelines that were that document that was presented to you. Continue on. Three B, the master plan for the neighborhood shall meet all of the following requirements. Complies with the comprehensive plan and any other relevant adopted policies. This is found on exhibit F, which the the master plan, excuse me. It complies with the comprehensive plan and other relevant documents, meaning the comprehensive plan and other relevant adopted policies comply compliance for the Capital City Mill District Area and Corridor Plan are identified on page five of the Capital City Mill District Master Plan, which will also include and also included other relevant adopted policies. The nineteen eighty-three Olympia Neighborhood Development Plan, the Granby Whaley Olympia Plan, which was adopted in nineteen ninety-nine, the Winston County Comprehensive Plan, which was adopted in twenty fifteen, Plan Columbia Land Use Plan, which was adopted in twenty fourteen, Walk Bike Columbia Pedestrian and Bicycle Master Plan, which was adopted in twenty fifteen, Rocky Branch Water State Assessment Report, which was adopted in twenty sixteen. Two, three B includes a map of the proposed boundaries, again, on exhibit Z. It shows on pages four and fifteen of the Capital City Mill District Plan, it provides a map and boundaries of that of that district. Three, three B three, describe the distinctive features, characteristics, and conditions that make the area unique and conform a basis for standards in the overlay district. Exhibit A, the considerations for selection, identification of notable sites and existing architectural character are are outlined on pages fifteen and sixteen of the Capital City Mill District Plan. Three B four lays out development plan goals for the character of the neighborhood. That's found on exhibit I. The development goals for the CC MD, which, you know, is the Capital City Mill District Plan, includes recommendations for architectural redevelopment that are found on pages eleven and thirty-seven and thirty-eight of this of that plan. Any questions at this time?
Commissioners?
So as each one of those were identified to show that essentially the requirements in order for us to act an overlay district have been met. The next section that we come to are the standards for this new overlay district. And it states, each NC dash O district shall establish standards for development and redevelopment, including but not limited to standards addressing. And there are a number of items labeled from A to V. I could go through each one of those and but we can, we can kind of talk about those. What makes those a little different is I actually, we found as a staff where the Olympia Mill Plan and also the Capital City Mill District Plan in many cases already addressed some of these standards. Again, these are not binding on you. These are things that we can have discussion and you can make certain changes to. But we just wanted to use it as kind of as a baseline to show where these have already been identified in adopted plans. What you see in red, the the comments that are in red are found within the Olympia Plan or the Capital City Mill District Plan. That was what you see in blue, which would be items four A and four B. And later on, four four M, O, S, those will come from our current land development code. So we found that potentially some of those standards that that may be placed could come from the newly adopted land development code. And those would be using the basis of the underlying zoning designations for that property, which are primarily R four, R six, and MU one. There is one section that is in green, and that is four U, which we talk about, you know, wetlands, drainage patterns and such. And that was in green because that does not come from either any of the adopted plans or the Winston County Land Development Code, but would be something that would be enforced through the Winston County Engineering, through other through other regulations. So if you would like, we can go through each one of these and talk the specifics for the standards. Or I'll just take your guidance, Mr. Chair and Planning Commission.
Commissioners, what do you think? Comments? Concerns? What he's talked through so far? Thank you for being so thorough. But what, Mr. Price, what would be our next step with this? What's our goal?
Again, if you would like, we can go through each one of these items. Again, we referenced the actual pages within the the other documents and where we can find this information. So we could go through each one of those. Or as a planning commission, if you're relatively comfortable with us using these guidelines, then we can, as a staff, we can actually prepare almost like a draft ordinance that actually will be more specific as opposed to just referencing. We so we will no longer reference where it came from, but we will actually reference specifics such as what the minimum lot width would be, what the maximum building height would be. We would actually address those specifically with numbers for you. And then you can make a decision whether those should be amended in some way or kept. And also, in addition, you are not limited to what you have before you. There may be some other standards that as a body you feel should be incorporated into this overlay district. So there'll be some additional discussion with this. And and also, one kind of point out, I expect that once we can come up with a draft, something that the planning commission is actually relatively comfortable with, we would then like to get this out to the community, those who were within would fall within these boundaries that were previously identified. And we'll kind of determine how we'll do that. And also to, one, to announce to them what changes may be coming, but also to provide them with an opportunity to come and participate, ask questions on staff. And we may also look to actually go into the community and hold a couple of meetings so that when people want to come in, they can they can come in, ask specific questions as relation to their property or also how the development of the Olympia area will be with these changes.
Chair?
Yes. Taylor?
If no one is in opposition, could we just maybe one?
Sure.
Satisfied with you. O's for four C and just use page forty-three to tell us how you would do location of proposed buildings or additions. And as a sample, certainly it doesn't have to be, you know, perfect, but just as an example, and then if everyone is satisfied, I think we can kind of extrapolate a
I think it's a great idea. Thank you, Commissioner Taylor.
So essentially, this will, this area, this looks to establish setbacks. Setbacks, but also some language. If you take a look at on the right column, be the second bullet. I'm sorry, on the third bullet, where it says the primary building should be located in the middle of the lot and garages and accessory structures should be in the rear. Again, those are things that we could bring forth and you as a commission, excuse me, as a commission will can make the determination of what he feels those are appropriate. Essentially, you're establishing setbacks in a specific location where buildings will will be allowed.
Yes. Gray?
Question first half, I'm looking at page fifty-six of our packet, which is part of exhibit. And the last bullet point on the page says, when to construct new, new construction within the neighborhood is appropriate only if it will not Would staff be able to define what significantly alter an extent contributing resource means?
Which which section will you read from? Get out, apologize.
Bottom of page fifty-six of the part of exhibit.
Okay. Which heading is it? When to preserve, rehabilitate, restore, or construct?
Yes.
All all four?
Oh, the last bullet.
Okay, thank you.
Just that that phrase at the end of the first sentence. I was curious how that was defined because that seems like the sort of thing that you could ask ten different people and you would get at least ten different answers on what that means.
Yeah, again, all of these are not necessarily going to be required to be brought over to, you know, to be adopted as part of the overlay. There may be some things just as you're questioning, and I think if we can't come up with a, you know, I think a quality answer to what you're asking, then maybe it shouldn't be included. It's a good question.
I certainly understand that.
Yeah.
And I think the the overall course that you've laid out of of preparing an ordinance that aggregates the relevant materials, I think, would be helpful for us to review.
Commissioners, any other comments? That's a good path to move forward.
Yeah, I think this is kind of answer, you know, I'm just gonna, you know, we'll look further into this. But I think the intent of that particular section is simply just don't tear down a building just to do it. That the intent really should be, if it's a vacant lot, of course, that's open for construction. Or if the building is in a condition in which it probably is not habitable, or it's not safe, then it should be replaced. But the intent of this section is to try to keep the existing buildings when the option is available to you and to more or less rehab, refurbish those buildings as opposed to tearing down since to new construction.
Understood, and that's, I think, on a related note, something that would be helpful when there's something for us to look at. Since there's a table that notes the the relevant zoning categories that are in the district, it would probably be helpful to have a map or unless I missed that in here.
Okay, we could, yeah, we can provide that for you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gray. Yes, I would like to see a path forward to that gets us to public input so we can invite the community to come in the meetings and
Yeah, and and of course, the idea is, and I think, you know, one of the good things is I think we've all been through this exercise recently. Something very similar in which is, I think, is good to have a document that's ready for the public to read. And then they can then participate because they'll know at least the direction that we're going. Again, it's not necessarily something that's binding because there may be some comments that come in to make us all kind of rethink the direction that we're headed as it relates to any of the standards that we may want to, that we may want to place. But again, to have something to present to the public, I think is something good to have first before we start really taking in the public comments.
Mr. Price, as a commission, do we need to make a motion today for tasking for staff?
Yes.
Okay.
I would, I would, yes, we would appreciate that.
Help me phrase this then. We're looking for an ordinance? Or just to continue the process, where you fill in some more of the?
If you feel that there's more discussion necessary, we can continue the process. But at the same time, we could also do both. You could ask us to direct us as a as a commission to begin drafting an ordinance based on some of the the standards that we've identified so that you at least have an idea how we'll look. And again, maybe that's just something, once you take a look at this, you have a better idea in which direction you want to take this.
Okay, commissioners, I guess I'm comfortable making a motion to task staff to write an ordinance to fill all of this in for us. What are your thoughts on that? Do we think we need more time before we do that? No? Okay, if I've seen a lot of head nods, then with my motion, is there a second? Second? All right. From Commissioner Metz. Gotcha. All right. Motion is to task staff to write an ordinance for the neighborhood overlay for Olympia Mill.
All right.
Please take a vote.
Those in favor? Yonki?
Aye.
Johnson? Duffy?
Aye.
Metz?
Aye.
Durant?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Sirkz?
Aye.
Grady?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you, staff. That wraps up number six, which moves us to number seven, the chairman's report. I want to defer some time to Commissioner Johnson, who had a few words. Do you still want to speak? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, just very briefly, hour and a half at six feels different than an hour and a half at three o'clock. But I I did want to just make a comment. I tried last month, or I guess month or four, to just highlight something. Clearly, this is our first month acting under the new code. And I just thought that is important just to stop. I remember before I actually took seat on the commission, listening to the meetings in those months leading up to that. And they were very well attended. They were very well engaged. And a lot of conversation about what was happening in the process and a lack of knowledge and 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 maybe contentious is not the right word, but but it was definitely an engaged process. And so at this point, I just want to make sure that we stop both to recognize staff as well as county council for allowing us to navigate through this process to get to today. I think it's just worth of point of saying that that we have turned a corner, and it's been a while. And so it's easy to get lost in that, in a long process and forget that there are times you have to kind of stop and look in the rear mirror and say, you know, we've 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 arrived at a destination. So I just wanted to, I tried to address that before, but kind of rushed at the end of the meeting. But I did want to just take a few minutes just to hear that, just recognize that F is done.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, and a big echo to staff. Big, big thank you for getting us through the restart process, everything with the land development code. And now here we are in March, and we're using it. It's great. So thank you, commissioners, for all your time and effort you invest each month. I seriously mean it. I know you guys spend a lot of time volunteering, traveling, and reviewing cases and and all your participation. And these discussions are great. You've helped me a lot by speaking up. Thank you. Your time does go by fast up here, so please speak when you can. And as a reminder, any feedback from you on how we can make the most out of our time here in twenty twenty-four as a commission to best serve our county, that's always welcome. So please feel free to reach out to me. Staff, later in the year, I'd like to help coordinate a retreat where we can hear from other where we can hear from other departments. Uh, we've successfully had three of these so far in my last five years on the commission, and I found each of them to be extremely valuable for both us and for the public who are able to attend. So can we start? Planning, doesn't have to be anything too big, but to hear from departments, it always helps with, I don't speak for myself, my thought process as I'm looking at each case.
Still trying to understand this retreat you're talking about.
Training.
Yes, yes, sir. Um, we definitely, we can start looking into that. And again, um, over the years, I think mostly staff has kind of put these together and we've looked at different items. But again, we welcome any input from the commission as to something specific that you would like to see us address. You know, please feel free to reach out to us, you know, as a staff, because, you know, the earlier you get it to us, the more we, uh, it gives us more time to be able to, you know, try it down, you know, appropriate speakers or, um, presenters at the retreat as we've had in the past.
Let's also do some calendaring sooner than later, because everyone gets busier schedules as the summer approaches.
So, so right now, I mean, we do it today, we can definitely wait until the next meeting. But if you want to go ahead and tie down a date, then that would allow us as a staff to go ahead and tie down the location. And from that point on, then we can, you know, move to kind of field the, field the agenda for the, um, for the training.
Just a spreadsheet last time, uh, through an email that helped. So I can coordinate efforts to get some potential dates and then we can talk to that collective as a commission. That, we can move on to number seven, number eight, uh, your report.
The only thing in there is the report of county council for their last actions on cases that y'all have, have made recommendations on. It's found on page one oh one.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Any other, uh, comments from the commission before we wrap up tonight? Thank you for hosting an evening meeting to make this easier for the public to attend. Hearing nothing from the commission, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
So moved. Uh, we do this with a show of hands? That's unanimous?
Yes, for adjournment.
Thank you, we are adjourned.